Children, families and communities. Can I ask Mr. Many to make the statement that he has to make at the start of the meeting, please? Thank you, convener.
Welcome to the meeting of the Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being livestreamed. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will then appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. With members of the press, please not post messages in the chat. Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Anderson?
Good evening, I'm here.
Lord Provost?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla?
Hi, I'm present.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
I've had apologies from councillor Lynne. Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sowers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Hi, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
I've had apologies from councillor Crookshank. Councillor Finnegan?
Good evening, everyone, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
I've had apologies from councillor Malone. Councillor Scullin?
Evening, I'm present.
I've had apologies from councillor Shears. Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton?
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott?
Yeah.
I've had apologies from Mrs. McVeen. Mrs. Little?
Good evening, yes, I'm here.
I've had apologies from Mr. Abu Bakr. Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Barclay?
Hello, I'm here.
Mrs. Javid? I'll mark her as absent. Mr. Anderson McGuinness?
I'll mark him as absent. And finally, Miss Orchardson?
I'm here.
Great, thank you. That concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. Can I just ask you to move to the first item on the agenda, please?
Yep, thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I'm not seeing empty indication.
Okay, item two, review of the service estate. This is for noting.
Okay, I think councillor Coleman, you were first in the queue, so I'll pass over to yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. At six point six, the report refers to a rack issue at St. Vegas Primary and Adler Primary in the Strathmatten ward. Whilst there is reassuring that there are no structural issues apparent at this stage and there are going to be regular inspections by the city engineer, exactly what is the timeframe to actually deal with the rack at both schools?
Okay, thank you for that. I'll pass over to Mrs. May, although I do think the colleagues from City Development are on the call as well, so perhaps they might be better placed to answer that, but I'll pass over to Mrs. May first of all.
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor Coleman for your question. And yes, indeed, our city engineer Gary Brady and also Neil Martin are both on the call and so happy to take the call specifically about rack, convener.
Okay, so I'll pass over to Donald Neil if you want to start. Do you want to pass it to Gary?
No, just pass it to Gary in terms of able to outline the condition on the time scales for rectification.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much. As noted in the report, the rack is in very good condition. We are currently inspecting it every six months and haven't observed any deterioration during that period of time. We are looking at an intervention because we recognise that rack in itself can continue to deteriorate and are looking at sort of a two-year window for that period to be to be considered for not replacement but stabilising and supporting the rack.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brady, and certainly councillor Coleman. The committee will be kept updated on anything to do with this issue and of course the four Strathmatten councillors will also be kept updated as any information comes forward. I hope that's helpful to yourself.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Duncan, you're next.
Thanks, convener. Just a quick comment. It's just a wee bit concerned that the three primary schools described as being rated C or poor are actually all schools whose catchment area covers part of my ferry ward, i.e. Barn Hill, Craigie Barnes and Eastern Primary. Although I'm quite happy, you know, that the electrical upgrades and fire alarms etcetera, Barn Hill replacement of roof coverings at Craigie Barnes and some toilet improvements at Eastern are welcome. I'm just of the opinion that, you know, there's quite a distance to go between a C rating and the most desirable A rating, and I'm just wondering when we can expect to get there.
Okay, I'll pass over to Mrs. May, but again, you might need to pass to City Development colleagues.
Yes, thank you, convener, and again, thanks to councillor Duncan for the question. Yeah, and the works that are outlined in the actual report, yeah, should bring these schools to a category B, but I will ask Neil Martin to maybe make a comment around what stage we would be at to get them to an even higher category. Thank you.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Duncan. In terms of an A, that's quite a tall order and as you'll note in the report, most that have got an A have been built in the more recent past, shall we say. So it really is a case of the nature of when they were built in a particular constituency and then obviously it's a matter of the investment and how the buildings perform and what maybe goes wrong with them during the currency and the lifetime that really influence what we're doing. So as you've recognised, that's why there's investment in these particular schools to get them back to be as soon as possible and then anything further than that will take from there.
Okay, councillor Duncan, does that answer your question?
Yep, I mean, partly I've got another question as well with a May. I mean, I get the reasons that, you know, it may be more difficult to get to an A in some buildings rather than, you know, another, but certainly it's an aspiration that's worth going for, I think, any rating. The other thing is I notice that there's promises to develop a strategy to upgrade the windows at Eastern Primary. I'm just keen to see if we find out what does that mean in reality. For example, when will the windows be upgraded and is funding in place to actually achieve it?
Again, I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Martin, so I don't know if I can pass you at ten, but Audrey's nodding, so Neil, we'll pass to yourself.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, councillor Duncan, again. So it is noted as a strategy purely on the basis we don't have the exact time scales because we're still exploring options. So and again, this comes down to the nature of the building, it being listed, having to replace like-for-like and suchlike. So there's these added complications having a building of that age. But on the basis of the weak capital identified when the programme in the appropriate year, when we're doing that, and like some of the other schools that we've done of a similar age, it'll probably done in phases. But again, we'll develop the programme and see how that transpires in the coming weeks and months.
Yeah, councillor Duncan, you happy with that response?
No, that's fine. And I just, I mean, it's a worthy aspiration and I just look forward to details emerging as in flying. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you for your questions. Councillor McHugh?
Thank you. I have a question relating to Kings Park School, page three, five point four point ten. Kings Park is shown as eight pupils above working capacity and I note that a review is ongoing into additional support needs across the city. But considering the very special and particular needs of these children and young people, what are the implications of overcapacity that we should be concerning ourselves with?
Okay, I'll pass it over to Mrs. May.
Thanks again, convener, and thank you councillor McHugh. I'm going to ask our head of education, Paul Fleming, to give a detailed answer to that question. Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor McHugh for the answer, sorry for the question. Kings Park School, as the report says, is slightly over the working capacity, but as the report highlights that due to the flexible nature of the accommodation, we're able to manage that quite well in terms of making sure that the needs of the young people are met. So it has a number of smaller spaces that young people need and small adult pupil raise your attention and other support as well from our NHS colleagues. We also have, as a result of the number of young people that have complex additional support needs, councillor McHugh, we have a number of satellite provisions across the city in terms of our enhanced support area ones where we support young people who have complex additional support needs. So any young person that is supported in Kings Park School is supported adequately to make sure that their needs are met. So we're confident and please be sure that all young people in the school at the moment are well supported.
Okay, are you happy with that, councillor McHugh?
Yes, thank you for that reassurance.
Okay, no, thank you for your question. Mr. Gibson, you have a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering on the, how recent the recent checks have been because raised, some teachers in Antrim Road have raised concerns over the quality of the ceilings and there's a significant amount of mould damage and water damage to internal walls apparently and ceilings. So I was wondering if that had been brought to the attention yet of the department?
Yeah, I believe it has and there's some plans in place to deal with that, but again, I'll pass over in the first instance to Mrs. May.
Yes, and thank you, convener, and thank you, Mr. Gibson, for the question. And yes, we're very aware, in fact, I visited Antrim Road myself before Christmas and I can absolutely provide a response and colleagues from City Development have given me some updated information to provide this response and confirm that a contractor was actually appointed to carry out this work back in November, that all the surveys and inspections have already been carried out and actually the work is underway. So this is to actually address some issues in the roof as a result of severe weather. So yes, it's quite recent faults in terms of the snapshot that we take to categorise the buildings in terms of their condition. But I think it's really important to reassure committee as well, and indeed, Mr. Gibson, that the rooms affected by this water ingress and therefore mould developing have been closed off by the school management team quite a number of weeks ago. So neither staff nor our children are permitted to access the rooms while this work has been inspected and then the work has been carried out to repair the damage.
Yeah, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, thank you. The other one was Barn Hill Primary, actually. I think all three of the primary one classrooms when I visited there had a leak in it. So just again to check that had been followed through.
I'm sure it has, but again, I'll pass to Mrs. May to reassure the committee.
Yeah, happy to confirm that where we've got water ingress in our schools and related issues, that these are reported immediately through a property part and section and colleagues in City Development and they work very much in tandem with us to ensure that the works are dealt with as soon as possible. And if there's an issue around young people, children themselves and our staff being in the vicinity of these areas, we make sure that school management put alternative arrangements in place to remove their staff while the work goes on.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. May. Councillor Alexander, you have a question and a comment.
Thanks very much, convener. Yeah, I'm sure many elected members and officers saw some of the reports today, certainly reported in BBC News against the backdrop of the significant level of investment required across schools elsewhere in the UK. And I was particularly struck by one story of a child who kept their coat on and their gloves on in their classroom because the school was so cold. And I think it's against that kind of backdrop that we're looking at this report. I was looking back, as I often do through previous reports, and, you know, you and I are both very long in the tooth at this point, so you're slightly longer than I, but in eleven years of reports of the annual update on the quality of our school accommodation, this is the best report I have ever seen in twelve years. So I think first of all, I would like to congratulate all of those involved in that. It hasn't been without its challenges and of course, more than a quarter of a billion pounds of investment has gone into the school estate over the last decade. And I think, again, that's a testament to the commitment to providing the best quality school environment we possibly can and hopefully that ensures that our young people are educated in the best quality premises they can and that enhances their ability to learn. My question, convener, is in relation to the upgrade works. Can I just ask for the executive director to confirm if the proposed works of one point nine million will ensure and continue to move the school state forward, particularly those that are currently graded at C into grade B and hopefully beyond in the coming months? Thanks.
Okay, again, I'll pass over to Mrs. May to respond to your question.
Thanks, convener, and thank you councillor Alexander. And first for, you know, the good positive reflection on the report and that there has been a significant improvement across the state over a number of years and that's around investment and commitment to the school state for our children, our young people. And thank you for noting that. And I can confirm that the investment and the planned works going forward will go towards moving all of the schools that continue to be a C, that's our primary schools that is, towards B condition. And that's absolutely what these plans are around. So I would like to confirm that for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. I was intending also, as Mr. Gibson did, raising the situation at Antrim Road Primary School. I have a surgery in Antrim Road Primary School every Tuesday, so I'm only too well aware of the water ingress problem, which has obviously been over a period of time. I was pleased to hear Mrs. May confirm that a contractor was appointed in November. I'm very conscious that we're nearly in February and I'm just really wondering, is there a time scale for completion of this work? Because obviously it is taking classroom space out and obviously that puts added pressure on the school.
Yeah, again, I'll pass to Mrs. May, but may need to pass to City Development colleagues, but come to the first instance.
Thanks again, Bailey McPherson and convener. I think City Development colleagues probably better placed to answer that question. Thank you.
Pass to Neil.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. We don't actually have the finalised programme just yet. It's just some of the survey work, surveys and early exploratory work that's been carried out, but that's currently been developed. So I would hope to have that with us in the very near future. So that being the case, I'd be happy to update ward members or all members in terms of what the programme is for the carrying out the works.
Okay, thanks for that, Mr. Martin. Probably best all members, given that the catchment area covers three wards. So it's probably just as well that you update all elected members. I'd be very keen to ensure that this work is completed ASAP because obviously there is an impact on the school and it would be good to get obviously all floor space back in use. So grateful for your response, Mr. Martin.
Okay, no, thank you for your question, Bailey McPherson. Bailey Keenan?
Obviously keen for the school to get this problem addressed as quickly as and hearing that we've got problems in a few schools isn't a great, but I suppose the amount of water that's coming through the skies these days would lead to, I believe, we might have more problems. That would need to be taken into account in the areas where we've got rack because that would deteriorate these buildings quicker. Should be water ingress in these areas. The other question that I've got though is in relation to the work that's going on to bring these classes back in and if there's work going on while the school is in session, and is there chemicals to be used to address the mould? And is the weather that, these chemicals would have a wider effect on children and teachers with asthma? So that we may well have to take that into account as there might well be a bigger issue there and inflicting a bit of a health issue.
Yeah, I mean, I'll certainly pass to officers in a second, but just to reassure committee, whenever any works happen in school, you know, the health and safety of our young people and our staff are always, take precedent to make sure that any works that take place, you know, don't put any young person or any member of staff at risk. But I don't know, Mr. Martin, if you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question and it's an important point. But I'd like to reassure you and the rest of the members that any works that are carried out within school hours are fully risk assessed and materials, plant, noise, all these things are considered. If there is any risks that are identified, works will be carried out with hours or during the holiday period to ensure staff and people's safety at all times.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay, with that, I don't see any other questions on this report, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene, can we move on to the next item?
Thanks, convener. That takes us on to item three, which is Scottish attainment challenge update, and this is also for noting.
Okay, Bailey McPherson, I see you were first in, so I'll pass over to yourself.
Thanks, convener. I don't intend reiterating the points that I and a number of members have made before about the disappointing reduction in allocations, which has been very significant, you know, from a very significant six point two million back in twenty twenty-one, cut again by over a million this year and a further million in twenty five, twenty-six. I think we're all very conscious that improving attainment across the city is something that is a long-term and ongoing challenge. And I think the report itself alludes to some of the very positive work that has been undertaken and continues to be undertaken using this funding. What I was wondering was, is there any indication when we reach the end of the following financial year twenty five? across the city is something that is a long term and ongoing challenge. And I think the report itself alludes to some of the very positive work that has been undertaken and continues to be undertaken using this funding. What I was wondering was, is there any indication when we reach the end of the following financial year 2526, is there any indication of a willingness on the part of Scottish government to continue to have some form of funding? Because what we don't want is what's left of this to drop off a cliff at the end of the 2526 financial year? Or is it the case that Scottish government has only given a commitment, albeit with reduced funding for our particular authority, to fund this during the current parliamentary term?
I'll pass over to Mrs May in the first instance to see if she has anything, any comments to make on that?
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Thanks, convener. And the answer is, there is no indication at this point in time of future funding. We do have this commitment to the end of this parliamentary term, as you know, with that tapering that you, you've described your knowledge of already and expressed your disappointment. But as far as, as, as the knowledge I have just now and through my national networks, that's all of the commitment that we have at this moment in time.
Yeah, I suspect we might have more information closer as we get to the end of that, that parliamentary term about what happens next. But Billy McPherson, is there anything, any other questions you have or anything you want to add?
There is another one to ask officers if, as and when they hear anything, if they can let us know. I fully accept that we're a couple of years off the end of the 2526 financial year. But the point really essentially is that bluntly in government, and I'm not meaning ourselves and local government, but I think centrally, there are far too many initiatives that are short termism. And what we really need in relation to attainment is a long term commitment to sustained funding, not tapered funding, but sustained funding over a protracted period of time. That's how you take, you, you, you deal and you improve attainment over, over time. But as I say, I would just really be grateful if officers could keep us updated on any news regarding finance that might become possible after the 25th, 25th, sorry, 2526 financial year. Thank you.
I see Mrs May nodding, so officers will make sure that elected members are, sort of members of the committee are kept updated as and when we know information. Billy Keenan, you're next.
Yeah, convener, similar to, to Billy McPherson, obviously really sad to see this amount of money going out of the city. This is now in its third year and probably 70 odd posts being taken out of education. And I'm wondering what officers' views of that in relation to closing the attainment gap, given that, you know, that, you know, it's all right saying we're going to create the great environment by having the schools in Great Nick, but if we don't have the teachers standing in front of them and that level of support going on, then obviously we're no imparting the knowledge at the rate we should be. And, and of course, we've had a few HMIE reports that are less than we'd wished for. So, you know, clearly seeing the effects of these cuts to the attainment challenge and wondering what additional evidence that the officers could give that would help us in lobbying the government for more money. As Billy McPherson says, it's got to be a long term objective. And just seeing the decline that they were seeing here, or 70 odd posts going and potentially another 30 odd next year, is just frankly no good enough for Dundee and the attainment levels that we see here.
Yeah, I'll pass over to Mrs May in a second, but I think it would be wrong not to mention that, well, yes, we have had a couple of disappointing inspection reports. We've also had quite a number of positive inspection reports that tell us that our schools are doing a lot of good things. So I think it's difficult to, I think it's be careful correlating one thing with, with bad inspection reports because that obviously means, does that then mean that a lot of the positive inspection reports should be correlated as well? And I think you need to be very careful doing that when by and large, our inspection reports over the last five to six years have in the main been extremely positive. However, I'll pass over to Mrs May for a substantive response to your substantive question.
Thanks again for the question, Bailey Keenan, and also thanks, convener. I'm actually going to pass to Paul Fleming, our head of education, just to, to give you some of the, the sort of headlines around how we've managed to look at this reduction. And I'll give you an indication of where the gaps are and what we still need to do and would wish to do. Thanks, convener.
Okay. Okay, with that, councillor McKeer, you're next on the list.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Billy.
Thank, thank you, convener.
Oh, sorry, Mr Fleming, sorry. Apologies, Billy Keenan.
Okay, thank you, thank you, convener, and thanks, Bailey Keenan, for, for the question. In terms of evidence about the impact of the work that we do to use as additional funding, we obviously produce reports for committee around attainment, Bailey Keenan. So we will have the next report coming to our next committee in March. For example, we'll be on the broad general education and the curriculum for excellence. And within that report, we'll outline where we are in terms of raising attainment, but also importantly around closing the poverty related attainment gap. So hopefully that will give you further information around the impact on attainment. And, and if it doesn't, or if you want information before that, I'm quite happy to provide it. In terms of the, the funding reductions, we obviously are aware that's the multi-year funding. So we have been aware that the funding has been tapering and year on year, as you mentioned, and we have been told within this at the outset of the Scottish attainment challenge, that the funding is temporary in nature. So had to build plans for sustainability into that. So in terms of, in terms of our plan for the Scottish attainment challenge for the use of this funding, we're working very, very closely with our head teachers, looking at the totality of the funding. So looking at our PETH funding, which has maintained this level of just over five million for the city, and to use all of that money in this totality to build capacity. One example of that is in enhanced support areas in the city where we have young people with complex additional support needs. Because that was new for the city and an area we targeted, we used the funding to put additional staff into that to work with our current staff to enhance knowledge and understanding. And then as we review that in our plan, that that knowledge and understanding is there, we're now reduced back to the acceptable ratios that are required in those classes to move those teachers back into mainstreaming. So they're not funded from this report. Another example is whilst the number of school and family development workers, for example, has reduced in here, they've not reduced insofar as they've been par funded by schools as well. So we're trying to use all of the additional monies as best as possible in line with our plans around sustainability. But I will provide further information as required, Bailey Keenan.
So apologies for that, Bailey Keenan.
Last another question. Do you think, do you think it's 70 jobs, Paul, going, that was based to grow attainment in our schools? Taking them out would have been like putting the brakes on.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. I'd have to go and look at the detail of exactly how many jobs. And, and the challenge with this report is this report outlines the number of people that are being funded through the strategic equity fund, but all of those posts haven't been removed in terms of the practice in our schools. They'd be funded, for example, some of them is supported through PETH and in partnership with our schools. So not all of them have been, have been funded this year through this, this F report. And again, I'm happy to provide any further details about any specific lever in this report, if that's helpful.
Yeah, so I was just going to say to Billy Keenan, apologies for not passing on to Paul straight away, not for the first time in one of these meetings distracted by my dog barking. So apologies for that and apologies that, Mr Fleming and yourself both in your prime. So apologies for that. Now I will move to councillor McKeer.
Thank you. As members will probably already know, I attach particular importance to the, to fully understanding the integrated impact assessments that accompany these reports before us. And on, so with this integrated impact assessment, page 22, no impact is shown under the health category. Considering that the strategic aim of the Scottish attainment challenge prioritises improvement in literacy, numeracy and health and wellbeing of children adversely affected by poverty, it cannot be then that reducing this resource will have no impact on the health and wellbeing of these children as it shows in the impact assessment. Surely.
Again, pass to Mrs May in the first instance?
Again, I would like to ask Paul Fleming, as our head of education, to comment on that because he would have discussed that aligned with the education team as they were pulling together this report and considering all these aspects. We'll ask Paul to come back in on that one.
Okay, Mr Fleming?
Thank you, convener, and thank you councillor McKeer for the important question. We too would place a real importance on the integrated impact assessment. We'll continue to work on the mitigations with head teachers right this year. So this new plan, whilst this financial plan, the, any changes really take part, take place in August. In this report, you'll see that we have talked about a negative impact in terms of the education and indeed the educational skills. The mitigations that we've put in place around any impact on, on health are being supported elsewhere. So we're not reducing or taking anything out of this that's directly correlated to planning and to planned improvements in health and wellbeing that hasn't been picked up elsewhere. So that is why we've determined that from the actions we're taking for this particular year, we don't foresee an impact on the plans around health and wellbeing.
Okay, okay. councillor Alexander, you have a comment?
Thanks very much, convener. I'll not leave by the point. I think my views on this are well known and is a mark of public record. And clearly, we would want to see additional money coming into the city, particularly in this area. And I firmly believe that targeted funding is the right approach when we look at issues of deprivation, attainment and some of those other factors. My, my question or request, I suppose, is in addition to that, is that obviously this money is over and above the, the general funding that we receive for educational support. And what I always find quite beneficial, and perhaps this can be provided after the meeting by way of a briefing note circulated around elected members, is some case study evidence. So I have seen firsthand some of these projects in action, particularly things like anxiety in motion. I know how impactful they are. I think it would be really valuable for all elected members to have an insight and to hear firsthand about some of the impacts, positive impacts that these initiatives, programmes, projects, staff have on attainment. And actually, that might well help us and enable us to continue to make the case to anyone for additional funding, whether that be Scottish government or elsewhere. Because I think there's an ongoing requirement and we all are very live to the fact that Dundee has higher levels of deprivation of poverty than many other local authorities. And we need to continue to challenge that and we need to continue to target our resources, both council and national, towards those ends. So if that can perhaps be taken on board, and I did see the executive director nod, that'd be very much appreciated, I think.
Yeah, I think to see that nod as well, so we'll make sure that that does go to all members of the committee. Okay, with that, with that, can this report be agreed? Okay?
Okay, so external members of the committee will now leave at this point in the meeting.
Okay.
And then that will take us on to item four, independent living support at Reed Square. And this is for approval.
Okay, I think this is a really positive and, you know, I think will have a huge impact for our young people as well. Just seeing if MD wishes to come in before we agree this report. Nobody wishes to jump in. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Arlene?
That takes us on to item five, review of Dundee scheme for the establishment of community councils. And this is for approval.
Okay, councillor Crane, I see you have a question?
Thank you, convener. I have no problem with what is being proposed, but I just want to be clear of what is actually being proposed. I was wondering, I'm, I'm trying to work out what the changes actually are. And to the West End, obviously with my West End hat on, I can see that the boundary is obviously being enlarged. And I'm just wondering if councillors can have a map of all the boundary changes in community councils and any of the changes, other changes that are being applied in community councils, just to be kind of made clear. Because I'm kind of struggling with that. And if that could be circulated to councillors, that'd be great.
Okay, I don't think that'll be a problem. I'm seeing Nikki nodding, you said, but I don't know Nikki if you want to come in and add anything to that?
Yeah, just to say, yes, that can happen. We've got the maps. We can share them with elected members. But just so elected members are aware, what is being proposed is that the Antrim and Blackness Community Council is subsumed into West End to create a larger West End Community Council. That Camper Down Community Council is subsumed into Ardler to create a larger Ardler Community Council. And the old Charleston Denhead of Gray Community Council is split into two to have one for Charleston and Denhead of Gray, one being renamed to Western Gateway. But I'll provide the, the maps for members.
Okay, you happy with that, councillor Crane?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Bailey.
Okay, councillor Owen Akla?
Hi, yeah, I just had two questions. One about what is the, I'm obviously very aware of Nikki's team and all the great work that they all do. I just wondered if there was any additional logistical support being given to community councils, just to ensure that these changes are made. Because although they're not huge changes, they are quite kind of tricky little ones that could take, they would need guidance, I guess. So I'm just wondering what support is there for them in a practical term? And then also, I'm not sure how it was in the main report, it was in the, the appendix afterwards about the fact that community councils should represent the communities that they, they are working within. Is there more that can be done around ensuring that? Because, you know, we go to community council meetings and, you know, the people that give their time are incredible, but you do find that there's a kind of many different cohorts that are missing from the community and engagement is so tough. So I just wondered if there was any support around that, that this might be bringing as well, this report?
Okay, again, I'll pass over to officers. I've seen both Maria and Nikki there, so I don't know who wants to, to jump in and go for it?
Yeah, happy to jump in there, convener. And thanks for the question. Yeah, so the, the support would come from the community empowerment team. And once we have this signed off, we'll, you know, make sure that the community empowerment team are supporting community councils to make these changes. And absolutely take your point about the needs, the community councils need to be representative of the communities which they serve. And I think what we would look to do is use the standards for community engagement that we have, that we can use, that we produce nationally. So when we go to do the actual training and upskilling for community councils off the back of this, we'll make sure that that's part of that and we are supporting them to be more, you know, representative of the communities that they serve. There's also specific things in here about having digital forms of engagement. And I think there's opportunities to work with community councils on those digital forms of engagement as well to make sure that they're really reaching out.
Okay, you happy with that, Nadia?
Yeah, that's good. And you're so right about the digital platform. Because I know that a lot of community councils want to be digital but struggle with premises and things. So I think that additional support would be, would be great. Thank you.
No, thank you for your questions. councillor Shaw?
Actually, I thank you. Last week at the city centre in Harbour Community Council, a question arose with regards to funding because as most of us will know around the table, that there is admin funding that goes to each of the community councils. And I wasn't sure whether it was just community councils and/or if it was the neighbourhood areas. And Nikki very much confirmed that it was both. So both city centre and Harbour Community Council and the Sosol Forum would be eligible in the Mayfield Ward. And I just find that very useful, the way that it's operated. So it might be an idea, Nikki, if that's shared with everyone so that we can all feedback to our different areas on, on how that funding is actually operated. And, and you'll be in the swing of things, Nikki, getting them all organised as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm seeing Nikki nodding there, so I'm guessing that will be done. So thank you for your, for your comment. councillor Anderson?
Thank you, convener. I was previously a councillor, as some of you know, in Scottish Borders. And in my ward, I had nine very active community councils. So I'm very supportive of community councils and the statutory powers that they have under the legislation. So I was just wondering on this list, where there's, where there's this sort of dormant community council, I'm thinking of Coldside, will there be efforts made to re-establish the community council by the team? Is that part of the plan? And also thanks for all the work you're doing on this to get it sorted.
Okay, again, I'll pass over to officers. So Nikki, if you want to come in?
Yeah, I think what this allows us to do, once we have the new scheme of establishment there, it gives us a platform to do some renewed engagement and promotion of community councils. And I think especially, as you say, it's, and it's noted in the new scheme of establishment as well, there are specific powers that community councils have that even the neighbourhood representative structures in Dundee wouldn't have, you know, particularly around about participation requests and things like that and input into the local development plans and, you know, similar things like that. So once we have this signed off, like you say, it gives us an opportunity to go back out to communities and ask them to consider if this is something that would work for them.
Yeah, happy with that. Okay. With that, I don't see any other questions. So can this report be agreed? Okay, and that's the business for children, families and communities. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Regeneration, Housing and Estate Management Committee.
Good evening. Just move on. Is it Arlene doing this one?
It is, convener, thanks.
Just move on, Arlene, please, thanks.
Okay, item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Got a second or so. I don't see any. So just take that as given. Thanks. Move on again, Arlene, please.
Okay, that takes us on to item two, tenders received by head of property and design. This is for approval.
As you say, quite explanatory itself with As you say, quite explanatory itself with a number of tenders and falling on from a couple of pilots will be taken forward from previous reports. Sorry, my computers have decided to shut down. Hold on a sec. Don't know what's happening here. Sorry, Bailey McPherson, I think you were first.
I was. Thank you, convener. First of all, a comment. I'm very pleased to see the Tulladelf Road pilot now moving forward. By utter coincidence, I've dealt with tenants there over a period of time. And one particular, and I have to say, he gets a gold medal for perseverance and politeness throughout. But he actually, by utter coincidence, emailed me this morning. I'm just going to read a little bit to you. I'm still waiting on my very cold flat to be insulated internally. In addition to this, from last year, water has been coming down my bedroom windows from my ceiling. I've had to go through another winter with my fat being freezing cold, damp water coming down my windows and the bedroom ceiling. I'm feeling very, very stressed about this. Now, I have given them the good news that the pilot is now going to tender today, and he'll be very pleased if this is approved tonight. My question, and obviously, it's been a time coming. As members know, I've been raising the issue of internal insulation for those properties that haven't got the external insulation for a very considerable period. My question's about the other two pilot properties which are in Logie. Now, I found out, if I'm being perfectly honest, by utter accident that one of them has been identified in Lime Street. And I only know that because a neighbour contacted me to say, this property, the tenant vacated, there's no new tenant. I'm worried about the fact that it's been sitting empty for so long. When asked for the explanation, that's the explanation. It's the pilot project. One of the pilot project properties, can I just ask officers if the other property has now been identified, and is that going in the same sort of timeframe? Well, clearly not tonight, because this only refers to Tulladelf Road. But are the other two pilot properties, which are for different reasons and different dynamics, due to the age and construction of the Logie properties, are these progressing in roughly the same timeframe?
Thank you for your question. Elaine, would you like to take this?
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I've got Olga Clayton and Michelle Harrow on the call. I don't know if they have the information, but if they don't, then I'm happy to find it out for you and circulate it to you by email. But I'll give Olga and Michelle an opportunity to come in.
Olga, you have it.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information available to me just now, but I'm absolutely happy to follow up post-meeting with it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd be sensible, Bailey McPherson. That's okay. Just follow up with all the elected members of the West End.
Yeah, I think fundamentally, what I want to know is, has the second property been identified and what's the timeframe? So grateful if that could be circulated. Thank you.
That should be no problem at all. Thank you. Bailey Keenan, please.
Just, convener, just a question around the rewiring or the project to check out the rewiring, wondering if we're sort of future-proofing the building as we do that by way of putting perhaps circuits in for solar panels to be connected at a later time or I don't know what circuit ready would be required if it was heat source pumps. But it would seem ultimately sensible to, with that level of disruption, to put these extra bits in potentially at low cost and save the disruption later. So I'm wondering if that's kind of been built into it.
Sorry, are you referring to the Tulladelf Road?
No, the Muddling and Kirkwood Rewire.
Yeah, just to clarify that for speaking officers. Olga, would you have any details on that?
I don't have any particular details in relation to the need to change our specification for future-proofing in terms of the net zero agenda. It's certainly something I could take up with city development to see if there is such a need to adjust our specification and report back to members as requested.
Okay, thank you very much. So, okay.
Convener, it'd be useful to know if adding a few of these things would, you know, would be going in at a very low cost at the moment as well, you know, given that, I'm sure that solar panels will be something that we'll think about eventually. And heat source pumps would appear something that the government's pushing in the direction of.
Yeah, I think it's always something that's sensible with regards to the climate, as you said, and the targets we do have. So I think officers will take that on board and any further discussions with regards to any upgrades we're actually doing. Thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, convener. Just to say, I'm so pleased to hear that work has been undertaken to restore the lifts in Durham Court. But my question is about the fabric refit. Dundee had made tremendous progress with the external wall insulation. I know we're now going to be looking at cavity wall insulation, and it's great. We're starting this work on testing out retrofitting. It says in here that the contract completion date will be June this year, and I was wondering if there's a timescale for reporting back to the committee on the outcome of the pilot and the learning from the pilot.
Yeah, I think that's very important. We do get some feedback on the pilots with regards to the projects going forward. Olga, could that be noted and brought forward as a future date?
Certainly, convener. Again, we'll liaise with the dev and see what the appropriate timescale would be, but obviously, aim to get back to you as soon as possible.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Is that okay, councillor Anderson? Yep, thank you. I think that's, Arlene, over to yourself. I think that's the business for neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, everybody.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Willie, we'll just crack on with the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
See, nobody declaring an interest. We'll take that as a no.
Okay, thank you. There have been no declarations. Takes on to item two, minutes of pension subcommittee and pension board of 18th September 2023. This is for noting.
Can we take that as noted? Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. Item three then, Police Scotland and Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. This item's been placed on the agenda at the request of councillors Creighton and Duncan.
Thank you very much. Okay, councillor Creighton, Michael, we'll come straight to you.
Thank you, convier. And I'd be grateful if officers could circulate the motion in my name. The motion is pretty self-explanatory. It's self-evident that the abolition of the previous Community Safety and Public Protection Committee last summer has resulted in a situation where Police Scotland and the fire services have not been under scrutiny by all 29 councillors. This, in my and obviously my group's view, obviously, it's supposed to be a public scrutiny. And it can't be a public scrutiny if not all councillors can't scrutinise both services and also every ward. Now, we're in a situation right now where a couple of wards in Dundee have zero representation, so can't actually scrutinise both services. And in my experience on the council, I believe it was, it really worked well before the summer. And I think also, by being on the committee and hearing what was going on in other wards, we could have colorations and things that happened in other wards and see if there's anything that we can do as a collective in a city and see if there's any trends, et cetera. So we, as a group, the Liberal Democrat Group, propose to improve scrutiny as it's self-explanatory and very reasonable. And I hope we can have cross-party support on this tonight. And I thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Michael. Thanks for your brevity. I will go to your colleague next to second.
Thanks, convener. And I'll also try not to detain people too long. As councillor Creighton's alluded to, the Liberal Democrat Group wants to see a return to scrutiny of police and fire by all elected members. And we would do this by the establishment of an emergency services scrutiny board. Ideally, that would meet with the same frequency as the current Police Scotland and Scottish Fire and Rescue scrutiny arrangements. It would meet during the daytime and crucially, in public, and be open to the attendance of all 29 elected members of Dundee City Council, should they care to do so. I'm sure we can agree that proper scrutiny of police and fire services in the public arena by all of us and not just eight of us out of 29 has never been more vital. We have already seen recent proposals to shut three more Dundee police stations, including Hilltown and Vai Hill. And the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service has been forced to reduce the number of available appliances in Dundee. We therefore hope that against that somewhat concerning background, there will be cross-party support for our sensible proposals to return scrutiny to the province of all of us.
Again, thank you very much for your brevity. If I can maybe just offer a brief response. I don't necessarily agree with the proposals. I think one of the things that was mentioned there was about public scrutiny, and I don't think anybody would claim that the scrutiny committee was no public in terms of its function and its outlook. Obviously, these proposals, as implemented and as currently operating, came in in June of last year. That was on the basis of early site to all elected members. So I connected and reached out to each of the groups. I met with two members of the Labour Group to discuss in person. I corresponded with Derek directly. Unfortunately, I would have to say that Liberal Democrat Group were the only group on the council that didn't engage early on those proposals to discuss the material considerations. So I just wanted to know that point. I also contacted both Police Scotland and Scottish Fire and Rescue at the time, because I wanted to ensure that any proposals that came forward, one, balanced the absolutely critical role that we have in terms of scrutiny functions, but also balanced that against what we all want to see, which is policing on the street, operational, working in our communities on a daily basis. And I did so in the knowledge that they were, generally speaking, supportive of the proposals that were put forward. I'm also minded, so originally, and many other members at that time will recall, we used to have the Tayside Police Board, which, again, was very effective, had a subset of councillors from each of the local authorities, in fact, only five from Dundee at that point in time. And effective scrutiny is absolutely key in everything that we do. These scrutiny opportunities are not necessarily there to raise individual ward matters or specific constituent inquiries, but to look at the overall strategic approach, to look at the overall operational approach that Police Scotland are taking locally. And I think we can do that through many different forums. I'm also minded of the fact that scrutiny takes place in many different forums, in many different ways. And there has been nothing in terms of the removal or reduction in anyone's ability to connect with, to meet with, to discuss local specific issues. And so I don't necessarily agree with the description or the proposal that's been put forward. I think this is about effective scrutiny and looking at those broader issues, zooming out and looking at the city in totality. And I think the current proposals ensure that balance is struck between the operational requirements of Police Scotland and Scottish Fire and Rescue. As I've mentioned, I did discuss it with them before it was implemented, and the needs of all of us as elected members to ensure that Police Scotland and Scottish Fire and Rescue are doing what we need them to do. But of course, all 29 elected members have an ability to scrutinise, to provide questions, to engage with both of those entities. And so I can agree with the description that was presented. And so I would move against the proposal and stick with the status quo, the implementation of what was agreed in June of last year. I note that councillor Short has a question, but I was about to come to the formal position. So councillor Short, if you can make it brief, and then I'll ask for a second. I'll bring in Kevin Keenan after that.
All right, sorry, it was just very much a comment. I obviously have the pleasure of attending the scrutiny committee, and it is something that has been brought up at the scrutiny committee by Bailey McPherson about the lack of representation. And basically, I was called a pest by Fire and Rescue. Wasn't quite as strong from the police, but we do have that access to each and every one of the people who would be at the committees as individual councillors, because we can email them. And at one point, my son thought I'd got lost because I didn't get out of the police station until eight in the evening. So we always have that opportunity to sit down and have lengthy discussions to scrutinise and talk to our colleagues. And the LCPP, and this is perhaps where you can help support this, convener, the LCPPs are also that place where you have the very, very important localised discussions. And I know operational, it's not always particularly easy to get the guys there. But certainly, any LCPP that I've been to, they have been there, and they do have the reports about the local area. And that's just what I was coming. It was very much similar to what you were saying yourself, but you beat me to it across the board. But thank you, convener.
Thanks very much. Councillor Keenan, Bailey Keenan, sorry.
Convener, just to say, as chair of the scrutiny committee, I think there was much greater scrutiny when the 29 individuals that are council all took apart and asked in questions. And it opened and it gave food for thought when these questions were being asked to others as to whether their area was affected in a similar manner. So I'm in favour of supporting the change back to where it was, the all 29 members. So I'll be supporting the Lib Dems motion.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And I'll bring the final question from councillor El Nakla. Nadia?
Thank you. Obviously, I've only had a bit of time where we had all 29 of us doing it, and now I sit on scrutiny as well. I'm just wondering though, because my understanding is only of a few other councils in Scotland that actually were quite rare in the fact that all councillors sit on all committees, you know, which is obviously a very large amount of work. I'm just wondering if anyone can answer that. Like, is this unusual for all councillors not to do it? Or is it kind of standard that it's within scrutiny? I'm not sure who can answer that, but just wondered.
Thanks, Nadia. I mean, the answer is, I think, on the basis of some of the research that I've undertaken, we were the only council in Scotland. So all other councils have a subset of councillors that sit on their various scrutiny arrangements. They take different forms, of course, but we were an outlier out of 32 councils. Dundee was the only one that operated in that fashion. And again, it seems to work and operate effectively in all other local authorities. So there is no reason that it shouldn't work just as well here. Bailey McPherson, I did say that Nadia would be the last comment, but I will allow you to come in, and then I will wrap things up. Thanks.
Can I just remind you, convener, that the formal position, when we've moved and you've moved to the contrary, there is still, in terms of standing orders, opportunity for people to make comment. And I think sometimes we just have to be a bit careful about getting the things in the correct order in terms of standing orders. Our point is this, and I think, unfortunately, your comment about engagement prior to the change in June is unfortunate. Relations between your group and ours wasn't at its best following you closing down any scrutiny regarding swimming provision at East End Community Campus. And I think sometimes it's not helpful in relation to good relations between the various groups on the council. However, we made our position very clear last June that we felt a reduction in the number of councillors able to, in a public setting, and indeed, cutting out two wards entirely in a public setting from the scrutiny of police and fire arrangements was a retrograde step. And I have always viewed, taking councillor El Nakla's point about all councillors, I have always viewed our arrangements about having maximum input possible from all of our elected members as a very positive thing and something that I think we should always seek to retain. I don't want to repeat the arguments that obviously councillors Creighton and Duncan have already made. But I will say this, there's another aspect to this, and that is about the work of the scrutiny committee. And the scrutiny committee already has a lot of work to do in relation to audit reports, in relation to care services and education inspection reports, and in relation to, for example, the council's accounts. However, one thing the scrutiny committee has not made good use of, which other scrutiny committees in other parts of Scotland have, is about calling in decisions. In fact, I think the only thing that I can specifically remember in relation to that is the roofs and Olympia fiascos, where there was an extensive discussion at scrutiny committee regarding both of these. And I think there's a good deal of other work scrutiny could be doing. And I think fundamentally, our point is that emergency services, particularly at a time, as councillor Duncan alluded to, when emergency services are under particular pressure, we're seeing the reduction, potentially in the number of police stations, we're seeing the reduction already in relation to appliances in Dundee from Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. I think ensuring that public scrutiny I think ensuring that public scrutiny of emergency services should be undertaken by all councillors. I don't think that's an unreasonable point to make. I think it's very disappointing. Quite honestly, convener, you say, well, engagement, but you bat everything away anyway. And the point I would say is it will take, frankly, I suspect, a change in administration to get back to that. But we note your position and obviously at some point we'll go to the vote.
Thanks very much. Bailey McPherson, a couple of points to pick up. First of all, it was a statement of fact. I contacted all groups at that point in time. And I know what you said now at every point, no matter what disagreements we may have in committee, I always have a professional and cordial relationship with opposition groups. Now, I can't account for a particular group essentially going in a huff over a particular issue. But the reality is that I have sought to engage in advance of the committee to engage that discussion. And I pulled up the email earlier about meeting for a coffee to discuss further. Other groups took that opportunity, despite the fact they might have agreed or disagreed with a particular issue. And so I don't think that sets. I also don't need any lessons in standing orders. I know the standing orders, which is why I've outlined the approach that we're going to be taking. And lastly, I think it's really important that we recognize that the ability for all of us as elected members to operate in our various forms. You mentioned about scrutiny committee as debt due. And of course, the opposition chair that, then it's entirely up for scrutiny to consider what they want going forward as well. So I don't think it takes away from any of that. And I think just very finally, it is about effective scrutiny. What we need to ensure, I think, across the board is that we are all operating in a way that is doing justice to the agenda before us. And I would hope that that would be the case in scrutiny, just as it would be in any other forum as well. And I was slightly surprised by Bailey Keenan's comments, I should say, because of course, the Labour group supported all of the proposals in June, with the exception of the role of older person's spokesperson, which there was a bit of a debate and dialogue around the time. So it does seem that that position has changed. And with all of that said, I've set out my position and on the basis that Bailey Sawyers has indicated he will second me, we'll move to the vote. Willie.
Thank you very much, convener. Firstly, the motion by councillor Crichton, second by councillor Duncan, is circulated. The amendment by yourself, convener, second by Bailey Sawyers, is that we maintain the status quo and taking further action. Convener.
Amendment.
Mr Anderson.
Amendment.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Amendment.
Deputy Lord Provost Cadell.
Amendment.
Bailey Dawson.
The amendment.
Mr Nakla.
Amendment.
Mr Flynn.
The amendment.
Mr Hunter.
Amendment.
Bailey Dobbs.
The amendment.
Mr Rome.
The amendment.
Bailey Sawyers.
Amendment.
Mr Short.
The amendment.
Mr Smith.
Amendment.
Mr Tolland.
Amendment, thanks.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Mr Finnegan.
The motion.
Mr McHugh.
Motion.
Mr McCurven.
Motion.
Mr Scullen.
The motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Mr Coleman.
Motion.
Mr Crichton.
Motion.
Mr Duncan.
Motion.
And finally, Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Yeah, that concludes the vote. There's 10 for the motion and 15 for the amendment. The amendment is carried.
Thank you. Willie, we'll move on.
I'll enter Sean's item four, neighbourhood services service plan mid-year progress report. You asked to give the recommendations.
Thank you very much. There's a lot in this report and obviously it's a diverse service, ranging from housing to the wider environment functions as well, and also overseeing quite a lot of the key priorities as indicated in the city plan as well. The report shows that most performance indicators are meeting their targets at the half year point and that remedial action, sorry, and remedial action is being taken to address any areas of concern. The plan also includes actions that are due for updates in 2027. But 69% of these are already on progress, which is really helpful. And again, there's a whole range of things within that that are worth highlighting, particularly in section 4.9 of the report. But hopefully the rest goes without saying and I'll just come to comments, questions. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. My questions are on repairs. And I know the average times in relation to both emergency and non-emergency repairs. I think it might be quite useful, and I'm not suggesting officers give a detailed response tonight, but I think it might be quite useful if elected members are circulated with an indication as to what the department considers to be an emergency and what the department considers to be a non-emergency repair. Now, I have a particular example of a tenant who has had a damp in his property, which he first reported to me in December 2021. I think it was actually inspected in October 2021. There was a further inspection in November of 2023 and I believe a further inspection taking place this week. Now, there will always be problem cases and I'm not suggesting this is the norm at all. But obviously, you can imagine the frustration on the part of the tenant. And I have to say, I find the repairs team extremely helpful. They are good at responding to stuff. But I'd be really grateful for two things, really. One is an indication as to what this, is that deemed to be an emergency or a non-emergency? Because clearly, this particular one has dragged on a particular length of time. And I'm sure that's an outlier in compared to many other repairs that are undertaken. And also, I would be very grateful to know if it would be possible, as well as giving the average time, to give an indication as to the number of repairs that have gone over a particular period of time. Because this is obviously a particular situation that has gone on over a very considerable period of time. And you can imagine the tenant's frustration at that dragging on. So I'd be very grateful for officer's feedback on both aspects of that.
Thanks very much, Fraser. I'll come to Eileen first and she might want to bring in Olga as well. Eileen.
Okay, thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the question. And what I'm happy to do is to circulate, we do have a list that details each of the repairs and which category they fall into. So I'm happy to circulate that round all elected members just to refresh people's minds about what falls into which category. In relation to the number of repairs that are out with time, I'll see if Olga can come in on that. But I'm sure we'd be happy to give some information from the system on that. But Olga Clayton, could you come in on that one?
Certainly. Maybe worthwhile explaining that we are carrying out a review of where we are in relation to repairs across construction services at this point. As part of that, we are reviewing the performance information that we have and are able to display to elected members and others. I can certainly look into seeing what information we have by category and reporting back. It's important to say that we recognize that there are a number of steps we need to take in order to catch up on the backlog that has accumulated over the past couple of years. I'm working on a comprehensive and hopefully robust plan, with the aim of that being ready by the middle of February. And that will highlight some of these issues and hopefully paint a way forward as well.
Thanks very much. Both responses are extremely helpful and I'll be most grateful to receive that information.
Can I just possibly ask one other thing? Obviously, over a protracted period of time, upgrading or renewal of the system has been an ongoing project. And my particular interest is in about achieving a situation where you can give a tenant a time slot, which obviously under the old system was not available. Can I maybe just, if Mrs Verlaine or indeed Ms Clayton could maybe give the committee a short update on where we actually are with that? Because I think it would be good to get to that sort of situation.
Yeah, of course. Eileen, come to you first.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. I'm not sure if Olga Clayton is able to give you that information tonight. But what I'm happy to do is to pull that information together in a briefing note just to give members an update on where we are with the progress of the implementation of the IT system. So Olga, if you don't have information tonight, then we're happy to pull that together.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Olga.
I could add that we had a meeting today to look at the progress in terms of the new asset management system. And we had a demonstration of its capacity in relation to voids, which looks good. And we also looked at how that was over working potentially with the new T-Mobile system for construction services. Again, happy to bring back more information about the timescale because the discussion was roundabout the project plan and having that project plan brought back to us in housing and construction services. However, functionality looks good and I'll get more information roundabout the timelines and bring it back.
Great. Thanks for that. That's appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Fraser. Dorothy, councillor McHugh.
Thank you, convener. I have a question under comment and I'll make my comment first if I may. There are eight indicators coded red in this report, this update, and six of the eight relate to housing. And worryingly, three of these six show a deteriorating long-term trend. It doesn't seem to be an especially good report by any standard. And I was going to suggest that perhaps we should be looking at some kind of an improvement plan being put in place. But I'm happy to hear that you're working, the officers are working on a robust plan. So that's reassuring. My question relates to item four, the same item. Page eight highlights significant progress areas and areas for concern. And under the bullet points about completions for social rented housing, the comment is that this is progressing well and the target will be exceeded by a considerable amount by the end of the year. I would hope so. And while I accept that this plan covers 22 to 27, if the completions target is exceeded by the end of this year, that will be the first time for a very long time. I had to go back 14 years to 2008/9 to find completions in excess of 200 per year. Between 2015 and 16 and 22/23, the total completions have been 670 over the period. That's a shortfall if the target was 200 or is 200 of over 900 units. We shall see what the final total is at the year end. But if it does, as expected, exceed the target by a considerable amount, this will clearly be an outlier, not a trend. There are over 7,000 people on our housing waiting list. We need to reach our target every year to begin to address this problem. I'd be interested to know what specific plans officers have in place to improve our completions rate over the lifetime of this plan.
Thanks for the question. Councillor McHugh, I'll bring in Eileen just now and then open it up. Eileen.
Thank you very much, convener, and thank you, councillor McHugh. Clearly, the impact on the affordable housing programme has been extensive as a consequence of COVID. And what we are starting to see now is those sites reopening and the progress coming through. You recognize that not all of this is in relation to our own work. This is in relation to the housing associations as well. I know that they are partners and they're working very hard to ensure that those properties are delivered. So I'd like to give you an assurance that we're working very closely with the Scottish Government and our RSL partners to make sure that those houses are delivered and come through the system. And we will continue to work with them going forward to ensure that the plans that we outlined in the ship, which was approved by committee back in October, can be delivered within the timescales that we're recommending. And we'll bring back regular updates to committee to demonstrate that that's happening.
Thanks very much. Eileen, it's probably worth adding as well. In terms of the level of investment, it has been significant over that period of time. I think one of the challenges, particularly with the target related to house building is that, and I reflect on our time working more closely together, Eileen, they never quite fall neatly within a financial year, which is obviously the accounting period towards what we work with. And then beyond that, there are, I think, it's fair to say, a fair number of headwinds, I think is how we often describe them, that we're contending with, particularly when we look at inflationary pressure, construction inflation. And we've had reports regarding that just in the last sort of nine, 12 months, setting out some of that contextual piece, because it's going to get really challenging. It's fair to say, I don't think any of us are naive enough to think it will be easy going forward. And I know that all elected members want to see the same outcome, which is a greater number of social housing developments coming forward. Not just council housing, but working with those housing association partners to develop and to deliver as much as is possible. Because we know the demand is there, we want to see that increased production delivery, but also the quality of what those modern houses deliver, both for the HRA and for housing associations generally. It's really important. I will bring in the convener of the relevant committee, Mark.
Yeah, thanks, convener. And I think you've probably said in a better way than I would all the major points here. I'm not as downbeat as some others might be about the housing situation as such, because we've got a lot of things in process and in plan, as you said, that they don't always fit into a calendar year. You don't build a house within a calendar year. They do slide and they do have an additional movement within that. And I think the complacency is certainly not there either. And I think the team, I have to praise the team since I've taken over the new department of my colleague, where they've done extremely good work in making sure that we're actually seeing progress being made. Olga's touched upon the plan that's in place or being put together, I should say, which is coming forward. I've seen major works improved within construction services with regards to the repairs, et cetera. And I have to praise the department. I don't think it's something that should be taken away from them. They've done extremely good work over the, especially, I would say, over the last period of time. And I think we're touching upon houses, housing in particular. And I think we went to a recent site where we purchased 30 properties of 27 and there's three other properties elsewhere. And that just goes to show our commitment with the HP and how we're actually using the money in a proper manner to provide energy efficient new homes for future tenants in the city. And again, that's down to the team and the good work they have done in making sure this is achieved. And I think it would be helpful with the comments that we made, convener, if the officers could maybe give us a number or going back to the ship, because the ship was agreed, as Eileen touched upon, the ship was agreed by committee. So what's the estimated number of homes which will be in the social rent sector will be completed by the end of this year? What's we expecting to see is probably helpful with regards to the conversations being had previously.
Thanks very much. Mark, Eileen.
Thank you, convener. Thanks, convener. If I can bring Olga or Michelle in, I know they have that figure available there for you.
Michelle, do you want to come at this point?
Yes, sure. Thank you. Oh, sorry, my dog just decided to bark at the same time. We're expecting round about 340 newbuild completions by the time we reach the end of this financial year, which will be fantastic for looking Dundee.
Can I come back? Absolutely, yeah, of course, Mark. Can I just come back, John, just to say, thanks very much, Michelle, for that number? Because that's really significant, working in partnership with other RSLs and others to make sure we do see this work getting done in a very positive manner. And I think there's others, perhaps, and I'll stick to the housing section within the bullet points in 4.9. We've just brought forward an energy efficiency and net zero strategy as well, because we're really targeting making sure we have energy efficient homes for our tenants to make sure their costs are kept at a minimum as much as we can, and especially through this cost of living crisis we are currently in, not with, out with our control, obviously. And again, it's important, housing is really the crux of this. And I think the team will make sure going forward, we will see improvements, we will see work getting done to meet even tighter targets and better targets. So well done to everybody involved. So thanks.
Thanks for those comments. Bailey Sawyers, Willie. Willie, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I've been in the council a very long time, as people know. And eight years of that was from 99 to 2007. Which for younger viewers was when there was a Labour, Lib Dem, Scottish executive. And from memory, in that eight year period, there were six council houses, six council houses built across the whole of Scotland. six council houses built across the whole of Scotland. I see Dorothy shaking her head, but that's facts. The other comment to make is that despite other parties claiming their interest, I suppose, in council housing, it took the election of an SNP government to remove the right to buy, which has clearly helped retain many more houses within the public sector. So I think members should maybe just reflect on these before they criticise others' record.
Thanks. Willie, Dorothy, I have already brought you in previously and I'm also conscious of being reminded tonight about standing orders. So I'm going to go to Kevin and then we can bring Mark to conclusion at that point. So Bailey Keenan.
I wasn't intending coming in, but obviously Willie's mentioned that there was only so many council houses built. But the whole Adler was built at that period of time. So he obviously needs to reflect on that as well. And it's just how the terminology was used at the time, so be it. I think the convener paints a very rosy picture of where housing is at the moment. And, you know, I think that you should start to ask officers about the number of requests that they're getting from councillors time and time again about the same issue and how it's not been resolved. And pay attention to the performance and the backlog rather than sort of painting an awful rosy picture. I mean, I'm getting to think that perhaps his wheelbag isn't anything like mine. And perhaps people have stopped talking to the SNP, realising that they're doing nothing for the sake.
Well, I don't think that's true in this latest, is it? Bailey Keenan, and I think we've already considered a number of reports tonight that illustrate the point that this administration and our previous SNP administrations have invested significant amounts of money in support of the delivery of things like high-quality educational premises. There's been significant investment and I don't think anybody can argue that there has not been significant investment in housing over those terms. And also, I think it's clear that at a national level, the Scottish Government have prioritised investment into social housing in all the various forms. And there has been a significant level of funding, an increased level of funding over those years that came forward. So across a whole suite of areas, this city has seen significant investment. This administration is laser focused on improving outcomes for every single person in every single community, whether that's about job creation, whether that's about educational attainment, whether that's about the quality of the accommodation within our communities. And most of that, let's remember, has been passed unanimously, not dividing along political lines. So when we consider things like the Strategic Housing Investment Plan, for example, that was broadly supported across the political spectrum. So it's one thing to criticise, it's another to acknowledge that actually the approach that has been taken on most of those key issues has been unanimous and not down party political lines. So if you want to criticise the SNP's record, I think you might want to reflect on the fact that you've supported a vast amount of the work that we've done to regenerate and to support the broader city. With all of that said, I'm going to bring this item to a conclusion. So with this report considered and questions answered, can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on, Willie.
Okay, thank you very much. Take you on to item five, council tax charges for second homes. Could I ask to agree the recommendations?
Yeah, again, hopefully this is relatively self-explanatory detail in the report. I'm not planning on going through. So I will just move straight to any questions or comments people may have. I see nobody reaching for the keyboard, so can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Item six then is housing revenue budget and review of rents and other housing charges. But as committee note, there was a typographical error relating to figures in third paragraph of page thirty-nine of agenda, whereby information on number of tenants who participated and indicated as a percentages. There, this should read two thousand and three hundred and thirty tenants and eighteen point six percent as indicated in table on same page. You'd ask to agree the recommendations.
Thanks very much for that. Again, I don't intend to go into this report in any particular detail. I think it is worth acknowledging a couple of things, which first of all is the extensive nature of that consultation. It's a fairly significant number of our tenants that have been consulted during this process. And I think that is a welcome thing indeed. Not, of course, just in terms of the feedback that we receive on the particular proposals, but also some of the other feedback that comes through some of those discussions that we have with community groups and individuals within our community. It's always been a particular note of pride, I think, for the council that we do have such extensive or such an extensive ability to engage with council tenants. And again, I know from speaking to other local authorities and indeed some housing associations, they're often looking at envious eyes at the number of people that we can get to respond to these things. I think it's also worth saying, there's always a delicate balancing act when we consider things like rents, just as we will consider the same when we think about areas like council tax and striking a balance between continued investment support for all of the services that I know all twenty-nine of us value and want to see continue to improve and ramp up, and also recognising the issue of affordability. And of course, I think we're all more conscious than that than ever, given the cost of living crisis, given the situation of UK PLC, when we look at public sector finances and the state of the economy generally under, you know, this Conservative government. And I think we've got to recognise that there is that balance to be struck. And just this slight anecdote before I come to questions, I was noticing on LinkedIn this week that we were actually being criticised, which I found quite strange, for not putting up rents by enough. And I think there is, again, that goes to the point about the level of investment that people would like to see in housing whilst also trying to strike that balance of affordability. But tenants have spoken and I think we should acknowledge that we thank all of them for their contributions. And again, that is a source of strength, I think, in this process. So with all that said, I'll come to comments, questions. Dorothy.
Thank you convener. I have a comment. This report proposes an increase of ten percent to sheltered housing charges. Now, in previous years, sheltered housing charges have risen, where they have risen at all, in line with the level of the rent increase. This year, there's a significant difference between these two rates. I've had discussions with officers around this and appreciate the reason for this larger than usual increase this year. Item seven on page thirty-two of the report sets out the statute governing consultation on rent and charges increases. And it concerns me that information on the shelter charge increases are not included in the body of the consultation document. They're just not mentioned. Tenants will only find detail on the proposed shelter charges increases if they click on a link to further information. This has resulted in many sheltered tenants not being aware of the proposed ten percent increase. That is certainly the case in my constituency. In many cases, sheltered wardens appear to have canvassed tenants on their choice relating to the rent increase and nothing further. I know this as a fact. Considering the high level of increase in charges proposed for the coming year, extra effort should have been made to draw this to tenants' attention and gather their views. I've raised these concerns with officers and Mr Many has given his legal opinion that the consultation is in line with the relevant Housing Scotland Act statute. I have the greatest of respect for Mr Many's advice, but on this we have agreed to differ. And an approach is to be made to the Scottish housing regulator for their view.
Thanks very much. Dorothy, I don't think there was a question, as you said, that was a comment. I will just perhaps bring in Mr Many at this point in time, given he has provided advice on that issue. So I was just going to ask perhaps just for you to comment generally on what information was provided in response to that. Very, thank you.
Thanks convener. I don't actually think there's anything I can usually add to what councillor McHugh has said. She's indicated the process that was going through here. The matter was reviewed by legal services and by me personally. And we take the view that the consultation was in accordance with the relevant legislation.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it's also worth saying, I suppose, and acknowledging that, you know, we've talked about timelines, obviously, in terms of the range of consultations that have taken place over the years and the varying nature of each of those. It's also worth noting, I suppose, that for a considerable period of time, sheltered charges were frozen. And again, I think that was something that was welcomed by residents at that time. And as I say, that was over a number of years that that was frozen. And I think what we are trying to seek is that balance. But taking point your view, Dorothy, and I know that you're seeking further information. So thanks for airing that with committee as well, because it's useful to highlight that. And I'll bring in councillor Short next.
Thank you convener. I'm not sure if Nikki and Marie are still on the line or not. I don't see their faces around. But prior to Christmas, I popped into one of the churches on Albert Street and B Friends had a cosy cafe. And one of the community community development workers was there saying, oh, how are you getting on? I'll put you down for a referral for a Christmas dinner from Dundee United and then I'll also ask you to fill in this form and it was a rent consultation. So I just wanted to put my thanks on record that the community teams contributed to getting the information in that took us up to the eighteen percent of tenants that actually got involved in it. It really is a mammoth effort and if we could get eighteen percent to come out to the polls, council elections, I'm sure would be delighted. But that's a whole different story. So, yeah, well done again to the team that led the consultation. Most appreciated.
Thanks very much councillor Flynn. Sure. Sorry, you know what I mean. They are not on the call, but I'm sure officers will take note and provide that feedback. And of course, Eileen is still on the call. So she's taken that on board and thanks for your comments. I will go to councillor Flynn next. Mark.
Yeah, thanks convener. Just to sort of follow on from councillor Short's comments, but take it from a different direction. I'd like to thank the residents who participated. Because I think the consultation process and making sure residents are engaged with what's being proposed is really important. And to see eighteen point four percent, I gave the team a target and they did really well to get to eighteen point four. They'll get a higher target next year. But to see that continued increase in engagement is really important. And it actually lets us see, even the breakdown, we say seventy-two point seven percent, we're going for option one. But we see twenty-six percent, we're going for option two and option three. So they're seeing the benefits of what the programme provides with the environmental improvements, the energy efficiency improvements, the Tennessee's sustainment options we're putting in there as per standard. And I think that's really important to note. And notwithstanding the fact that we're still got the hardship funding here as well with regards to supporting through the cost of living crisis. And I think it'll be very important to see the level of rise. I think we're going to be, we've worked really hard here. And I think it's going to be quite one of the lowest within the country. And I think that's again, again, taking in cognisance of the fact that we are in a cost of living crisis and helping to support as many as we can within the city in these difficult times.
Thanks very much for those comments, Mark. That's really helpful. Bailey Keenan, Kevin. You're on mute.
Convener, I think that councillor McHugh makes a point in relation to the consultation and suggesting that it wasn't as clear as it could be. And if people through some accustomed practice have been expecting the same level of increase, then they wouldn't know to go looking elsewhere to find out that there was a ten percent one going on this time. So what would we propose to do differently next year? So is it the same thing would not happen again? You know, might well just be legally okay, but there's a sort of moral issue around what people would have expected. So is there something that we could do with this survey to make sure it's better?
Thanks for the question, Kevin. I'll go to Eileen first. Eileen.
Thank you convener and thank you Bailey Keenan for your question. I would like to reassure you that much as we pride ourselves in the level of consultation and response that we've had from our tenants, any improvements would be welcome. So if there is other things that we can do to engage with our tenants, then we would want to do that. So happy to receive any suggestions from elected members of their thoughts on how we might go about that. We certainly do engage with Dundee Federation of Tenants Association and we've asked them in the past of how they want to improve the consultation. And we will be looking at that ourselves from an officer point of view to see what more we can do to engage as many people as we can in that consultation, because it's vital that we that we have that information to make the appropriate decisions going forward. So happy to take that on board.
Thanks Eileen. Kevin, you want to come back in?
No, thanks for that.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's all the questions on this item. So can we take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. And finally, item seven, mobile voice and data contract. You'd ask to agree the recommendations.
Again, hopefully this is self-explanatory. And of course, any saving is welcome in the current climate. So thank you very much for finding a cheaper contract to the officers involved in that. Any questions, comments? Nope. Can I take this as agreed? Okay, thank you all very much for your participation, your questions and your contributions. Have a great week. That is all of the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.